The regular business meeting to order at six thirty-three roll call please.
Berman?
Here.
Luther is absent. McNeil?
Here.
Pierce?
Hi, here.
Mason?
Here.
Peterson?
Present.
Mayor Gardner?
Present. Alright, so mayor reports first up. Happy Valentine's Day. Feel the love in the room. So, thank you for coming tonight. Abra, tonight, we also have this month, American Heart Month. It's also Black History Month, Groundhog Day, which was already passed. National Boy Scout Day was the, was the eighth. Chinese New Year was the tenth. We just had Abraham Lincoln's birthday on the twelfth. Ash Wednesday today. And then President's Day is next Monday. And then, how old is Antioch on the twenty-nine? Come on, what's your job?
Eighteen ninety-two, but by leap years, I don't know.
Okay, alright. So.
No, I wasn't around.
Looking at the historian. Do we have any citizens that sign up to address the board?
No.
Okay. Consent agenda, we have three items on the consent agenda. Do I have any requests to remove any of those items? Otherwise, I guarantee a motion in a second.
So moved.
Motion trustee McNeil, second trustee Berman, roll call please.
Berman?
Yes.
McNeil?
Yes.
Pierce?
Hi.
Mason?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Five voting yes, motion carries. Regular business consideration and approval of payments of accounts payable as prepared by staff in the amount of nine hundred and twenty-eight thousand, six hundred and twenty-six dollars and fifty-five cents. Do I have a motion in the seconds?
So moved.
Trustee McNeil, second trustee Berman, any discussion on this item? Questions?
Can we, just the higher?
Sure.
I know there's, like, the clarifier slab and something for the Capitol.
Yep. Mr. Guttow?
Here, yes, so as you've stated, there was a significant final payment for our clarifier. There was significant invoice for dispatch services on the PD side of things. There was a significant payment to Southwestern Illinois College for the payment of our police recruit training. Significant payment to the tune of thirty-two thousand dollars for electricity for streetlights. I think that covers the bulk of the very large.
One, one bond payment, did you say that? Is there a large bond payment, I remember? Like four hundred and forty-three thousand? I think, um, fifty-three of two fifty is on mine, on my tablet.
There you go. And the bond payment for four hundred and forty-three thousand. Thank you, Mayor.
Any other discussion? Alright, roll call please.
Berman?
Yes.
McNeil?
Yes.
Pierce?
Hi.
Mason?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Five voting yes, motion carries. Consideration and approval of an ordinance approving and adopting amendments to the employee handbook for the Village of Antioch, Lake County, Illinois, related to vacation payout and rollover policy, ordinance number twenty-four dash oh-two dash ten. Do I have a motion and a second waiving the second reading? Motion trustee Mason?
Second.
Second trustee Peterson. Anything on this item? If not, roll call please.
Berman?
Yes.
McNeil?
Yes.
Pierce?
Hi.
Mason?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Five voting yes, motion carries. Consideration and approval, number six, I'm sorry. Consideration and approval of a resolution granting authority to the acting administrator to execute a contract with Dom Enterprises, Inc. for the transportation and land application of bio-salads starting on March seventh, twenty-twenty-four, and concluding on March sixth, twenty-twenty-five. Resolution number twenty-four dash eleven. Do I have a motion and a second?
So moved.
Motion trustee Peterson?
Second.
Second trustee McNeil, roll call please.
Berman?
Yes.
McNeil?
Yes.
Pierce?
Hi.
Mason?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Five voting yes, motion carries. Item number seven, consideration and approval of an ordinance authorizing an interested parties registry for the activities related to a proposed redevelopment project area in the Village of Antioch, Illinois. Antioch Marketplace Redevelopment Project Area Tiff District, ordinance number twenty-four dash two dash eleven. Do I have a motion in the second waiving the second reading?
So moved, waiving the second reading.
Motion trustee McNeil?
Second.
Second trustee Berman. Any questions, Mr. Garrigan is here to answer those. Mr. Garrigan, do you have anything you want to add on this one?
This is just, we're just beginning to put up the process, as you know, regards to Tiff, there's a certain state actually regards this, uh, regulates the public hearing process. We are proceeding with that process right now. Today's the first date of that. There will be a formal public hearing where we'll have an opportunity where S.B. Freeman will come in, they'll completely walk you through the proposed redevelopment agreement for this proposed Tiff. Uh, there's also a future joint review board where we'll have all the other taxing bodies come in. That will be a public hearing before those taxing bodies. Um, so we are just starting the public hearing process for this proposed Tiff. As we've already discussed, this is for the proposed marketplace property. Uh, it lost, along with Upton property, approximately a hundred and fifty-plus acres. Um, and we're excited about this proposed project because we're getting some real, uh, real interest from a, a commercial development perspective. So with that, I'll be more than happy to answer any questions that the village board may have.
Alright, if there's no questions, we'll, we'll, your roll call please.
Berman?
Yes.
McNeil?
Yes.
Pierce?
Hi.
Mason?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Five voting yes, motion carries. Eight, consideration and approval of an ordinance fixing a time and place for a public hearing and convening a joint review board to consider a proposed redevelopment plan and project. You guys get over here?
No, I'm just having a side meeting.
Okay. I'm gonna start from a joint review board to consider a proposed redevelopment plan and project and the proposed designation of a redevelopment project within the Village of Antioch, Illinois. Antioch Marketplace Redevelopment Project Tiff District, ordinance number twenty-four dash oh-two dash twelve. Do I have a motion and a second waiving the second reading?
So moved, waiving the second reading.
Motion trustee Peterson, second trustee McNeil, roll call please.
Berman?
Yes.
McNeil?
Yes.
Pierce?
Hi.
Mason? Peterson?
Yes.
Five voting yes, motion carries. Number nine, consideration and approval of a resolution supporting and approving the merger and consolidation of Heron Harbor Homeowners Association. On behalf of the Village of Antioch, resolution number twenty-four dash twelve. Do I have a motion and a second?
So moved.
Motion trustee McNeil?
Second.
Second trustee Berman. Anything on this item?
Just, just to make a comment, that this might be a draft, but it might have to change, that homeowners, make it homeowners association, makes a different decision.
Sure, okay, yep. Um, we will defer to the homeowners on this, just to let them move forward. Roll call please.
Berman?
Yes.
McNeil?
Yes.
Pierce?
Hi.
Mason? Peterson?
Yes.
Five voting yes, motion carries. Next is consideration and approval of an ordinance annexing certain properties to the Village of Antioch and approving an annexation agreement for the property commonly known as two-two-three-three and two-two-two-seven-five. West Illinois Route one-seventy-three pins one-two dash one-six dash four-hundred dash zero-zero-two and zero-zero-eight. Ordinance number twenty-four dash oh-two dash thirteen, again, uh, commonly known as a waste management property. Do I have a motion in the second waiving the second reading?
So moved, waiving the second reading.
Motion trustee Peterson?
Second.
Second trustee McNeil, roll call please.
Berman?
Yes.
McNeil?
Yes.
Pierce?
Hi.
Mason? Peterson?
Yes.
Five voting yes, motion carries. Next item number eleven, consideration and approval of ordinance granting M-two zoning for the properties commonly known as twenty-two thirty-three, three-three-three, and twenty-two seventy-five, West Illinois Route seventy-three. Uh, same pin numbers, ordinance number twenty-four dash oh-two dash fourteen. Do I have a motion and a second waiving the second reading?
So moved, waiving the second reading. Second.
Motion trustee McNeil, second trustee Berman, roll call please.
Berman?
Yes.
Trustee Pierce?
Michael, can you explain to me why it's necessary for the M-two zoning on this instead of what current zoning it has? Is this an incentive for them or they can't operate without this?
They cannot operate without this. The M-two zoning, just so you know, the owner of the property, obviously property is zoned industrial as we speak, it's in Lake County. The owner of the property has made it quite clear, um, that they want to maintain, um, the industrial zoning. So, working with, uh, this end user, Chicago Truck Group, um, obviously for a new commercial business, uh, we are requesting not only a PUD, a special use, but also more importantly, the M-two zoning, which will keep it to its industrial zoning, which will be consistent with what the owner of the property is looking for. That is a condition precedent to allow this property to be annexed. So it's basically a way of addressing the owner's concerns, but also more importantly, annexing a, a, a good commercial business into the Village of Antioch, uh, which will generate sales tax.
Okay, thank you.
One last thing.
Yep.
So, Mike, when you're doing this, since we're getting dealers, we're getting the dealership, forgetting this, generating all this car traffic, truck traffic. We need, I think we need to write out to the state to do a traffic study. Forty-five speed limits with all this new traffic, didn't start getting too fast with all the, you know, new cars going in and out of dealerships.
Well, I said, you know, I know that's a good suggestion. We're gonna hopefully have a meeting with the only Department of Transportation, hopefully in the near future, talking about future improvements to Route one-seventy-three, basically in this general area, um, as part of the marketplace property, and we'd be more than happy to discuss that.
Use my term, the Walmart Speedway?
Well, I'd be more than happy to use that term.
Thank you. Um, anything else? Otherwise, roll call please.
Berman?
Yes.
McNeil?
Yes.
Pierce?
Hi.
Mason?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Five voting yes, motion carries. Uh, number tw- item twelve, consideration and approval of an ordinance approving a special use for the planned unit development for the property commonly known as two-two-three-three, three and two-two-seven-five. Route one-seventy-three and same pin numbers, the Waste Management Project, um, ordinance number twenty-four dash oh-two dash fifteen. Do I have a motion and a second waiving the second reading?
So moved, waiving the second reading.
Motion trustee McNeil, second trustee Peterson, discussion, roll call please.
Berman?
Yes.
McNeil?
Yes.
Pierce?
Hi.
Mason?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Five voting yes, motion carries. Alright, um, what a great meeting. Administrator's report.
Not here. Uh, there's a couple of updates for you. So, on the open space project, if you've noticed, construction has continued to move away, move along at a pretty swift pace. Weather's been very cooperative with our contractor over there, um, which has allowed them to make up some lost time that was result early on, some of the delays that we saw due to the utilities. Um, so they're on track right now and they still believe they're gonna build and meet our uh, on-time delivery for that project. Relative to that project, the park naming contest, details of that have been worked out. Uh, Assistant Administrator Moran is working on a memo that will be sent to the board later this week or early next week. The staff's recommendations on how we'd like to proceed, uh, kind of compiling the feedback that was obtained by the board and bringing those ideas together into one, one project. Uh, the Village Hall, as you know, we took possession of that building recently from our prior tenant. Uh, we continue to work with our architects to finalize the schematic and design of that building, and we're getting close to being able to move in the next phase of that project. Uh, we will be bringing those to the board as soon as they're available. Um, we're having them design the existing, within the existing footprint of the building, and we do plan to bring an alternative to the board to take a look at. Uh, we're having them do some preliminary design on a much scaled down version of the boardroom addition. The board will be able to make the decision whether or not they would like to see that included as a bid alternate when we go out to bid docs. For all the public works, our staff continues to work with the design team to work to bring that project itself in alignment with our budget. We are gonna be meeting with a instruction manager for him to better understand what services they came able to offer to help improve our efficiencies on the project delivery for Village Hall. As you know, we had, uh, went out for RFPQ for an owner's rep. The next step of that is to go out to RFPQ on a construction management and make a decision for what's gonna work best for us to make sure that we deliver that project on time and on budget. In order to keep moving our public works project, uh, towards the finish line, uh, we're getting very close to obtaining all the necessary easements and right-of-ways for that project which are needed for not only access to the public works facility, but to provide access for the future grim road between Bodycraft and Cunis. We hope to bring those to the board in the very near future as we continue to finalize the details with the property owners. Something I like to have on the board's radar, relative to our parks department and the programming that they offer. District thirty-four has informed us that they, their board has given direction to implement a new facility usage agreement in the district's endeavors to implement new facility usage fees that despite our, um, our pleas, the village will not be exempt from those fees. The good news is, is that when we do use their facilities, we're gonna be on the low end of the fee structure. But at this time, uh, does not appear that we will be able to maneuver around those fees, which would have to be incorporated into our programming costs.
Excuse me?
Yes, sir. Do we waive fees for them when they come here for permits and stuff?
Yes, we have traditionally waived fees.
We have, we traditionally waive fees for them, but they're not gonna waive fees for us.
I'm, I'm just answering.
A, a board discussion.
Yes, and that wa- that was anticipation that the board may have some specific feelings to that. That's why I wanted to make sure it's on your radar before it, it drops on your desks. Uh, we have had several meetings with the district. Of course, this is not finalized, and we have expressed our concerns, um, to work in the spirit of cooperation. Um, that they're concerned about that their costs continue to escalate, uh, to maintain their facilities, so they're looking to try to capture some of those the wear and tear that they're seeing on their facilities through this fee. Um, our upcoming budget meeting, as you know, it's coming up in a, in a very short period of time on a Monday evening. Just to let the board know, the focus of that meeting is gonna be primarily on the operational budget to make sure that the packet that we prepare for the board aligns with your expectations. We heard you loud and clear last year when you felt that you did not have adequate time for, for input and feedback in advance, so we're trying to accelerate that process to give you an early look and let us know if you think we're heading in the right direction. Again, Zaya will touch a little bit on the budget, um, during her finance presentation this evening. But we do plan to have a second follow-up meeting, which will allow us to dive a little bit deeper into our capital improvement plans and the budgets associated with that. Last week, the mayor and I met with the, uh, homeless coalition that's been formed in our area. It was kind of cool to see when we started to be a part of this about a year ago, we were able to fit around the staff table. And at our most recent meeting, we've had enough stakeholders come in to be a part of that that filled the library's boardroom. Um, so it was, it's about gone up about tenfold in the amount of agencies and people that are trying to address some of the homeless concerns within Lake, Western Lake County. Little bit of an update on the fiber optic connection that I notified you about yesterday, that knocked out our communications and our internet to Public Works and our Parks Department. Uh, they were able to bring in a contractor today to mend that splice, that damaged line. Uh, however, it's a temporary fix and Amy continues to work on a plan to segregate our services out of the fire department and allow us to not run into these problems again. Uh, we'll bring that, bring more information to the board when that comes available. And then lastly, I just wanted to let the board know that we've been notified that, uh, Aquatics and Program Manager Dawn Johnson has announced her retirement that'll be effective on March eighth. So we're sad to see her go. Uh, we have already initiated the job posting and will begin seeking a replacement for that, um, in time for full season. Unless the board has any questions, that will conclude my report.
Questions? Trustee Pierce?
Um, driving around town, there's a significant lack of snow that we normally have covering up all the trash and garbage and, and stuff like that in parking lots and along the Walmart, uh, road, Deep Lake Road. You go down Anita, you look on the west side of Anita, we're along the sidewalk there, it's beer cans, soda cans, probably used adult things that we don't want to discuss. Um, could be all sorts of just nasty stuff along Anita. Significantly on the Ash, I think the Ash Pallet property. There, there's, I, I think the village maybe needs to notify people throughout the community, hey, even though it's winter time, we don't normally have to clean because of the snow, we should be cleaning now because it's nasty out there.
Sure. A- a- as you know from your many years on the board, this is a common occurrence that we see every year in the spring. Um, usually, we have to call Walmart and touch base with their store management, kind of nudge them a little bit to get ahead of that on their property, and they're usually responsive, so we'll have, uh, code enforcement, Reno, touch base with them. And we will also work with other property owners to make sure that they're, they're cleaning up.
It's just not Walmart now. It's like, the snow's gone, the garbage is out.
Yep. We'll start working with property owners to make sure that we communicate the need to clean that up.
Thank you.
Any other comments, questions? Alright, thank you. Um, village clerk, any report?
Uh, yes, just to announce that the last day for voter registration in our office will be Tuesday, February twentieth, and it will reopen, um, March twenty-first after the general primary election.
Thank you. Um, department reports, community developments.
Thank you. I just wanted to give the board an update. We've had, uh, since our last meeting, we had numerous meetings with our engineers coordinating the, uh, proposed improvements of the marketplace property, specifically some of the identified improvements for Route one-seventy-three and Brown Road. So we've been working with the developer, along with Mr. Scarpelli and the Kia, Kia dealership, trying to the best of our ability to get that project, um, going. Um, we are, the engineer from Walpert will be submitting revised plans to IDOT next week, uh, with a letter of support from the, from the mayor. Uh, we're trying to coordinate a future meeting with IDOT to discuss those future improvements around Route one-seventy-three. We also had a, a meeting today with the developer. Um, so there, I think there's, there's real, there's letters of intent and real proposed commercial deals, which obviously I can't disclose at this point, but, um, there's real, uh, interest in this project and staff will continue to work with the developer to, um, get those new outlets entitled. And secondly, I just wanted to provide the board an update. Um, the Historic Preservation Commission finally, we finally finished our urban survey. It's been, was a two-year endeavor. Um, obviously it took a tremendous amount of, uh, staff time and more importantly, the time of the commissioners. Um, so we completed that, a survey, and we have created a new interactive map. That map should be going live as we design, redesign our website. Um, so we're, we're excited about that. And also, the Historic Preservation Commission, we're beginning this process of, uh, entertaining, uh, our second landmark. So, um, we're discussing potential second, a second landmark, um, hopefully with the next few meetings. Thank you.
Right, thank you. Um, finances, Director Torres, I'm Zoom.
Yeah.
Hello.
Good evening. Good evening, mayor and board. Tonight, I just want to add to what the, uh, the acting village demonstrator Gutsho, um, expressed tonight, working very diligently and unitedly to bring you a balanced budget. We're taking a lot of time to work together and go through each line item and review all the details. Our goal is to discuss and bring you the operating budget and probably walk away as well with some capital ideas, additional capital ideas, I want to emphasize, so that when we can have a capital meeting and put that budget part together. We plan to have each department head, we'll do their own presentation with PowerPoint. My intent is to email you the PowerPoint well ahead of time, email you a draft, and also in your mailboxes, I will provide you a hard copy as well as the first draft. Each, each department will present their budget. I will give you a overview of the entire fund. Our goal is to provide better education and more detailed education about the nineteen funds the Village of Antioch has and walk away giving you the understanding so that you can help us, um, lead this budget through for twenty-five successfully. That's all I have tonight. Sorry for my camera, I have any IT issues.
Um, I know trustee Pierce had a question.
Um, okay.
My, my question is, on, on the agenda tonight, as the administrator said, there was a payment for thirty-two thousand dollars for her village li- lighting and electricity and stuff. Do you know off the top of your head what our average electrical bill is? Or is that something you have to research?
No, but we could email to you.
Yeah, would you please, because as I look at these people that want to put solar farms in the village, I'd, I'd like to start also discussing recapture fees and, and to help. Uh, if they're, if they're coming in here and doing nothing for the village, I'd like to recapture some fees from them if possible.
Absolutely, we'll get that to you.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you. Um, police.
Couple of items, uh, follow-up from the last meeting for the board. Uh, we did follow up on the concern that was raised over how snow mobile operations are being conducted on private property over on Anita Terrace. Uh, Code, Code of Enforcement Officer Moreno was in contact with their property management. They assured us that they would resolve the issue with their plow contractors, so they shouldn't have any more additional problems with them plowing snow out of their parking lot across the village road and dumping it onto, um, the sidewalks in public areas.
Didn't they clean all the gravel off that they also deposited there?
We can have a conversation with them if there's a problem with that as well.
Thank you. Our village staff's gonna do it.
I agree. Um, just a follow-up item to the ongoing discussion regarding the concern over the handicap parking signs that are on some of our privately owned parking lots throughout the village. Um, we had our legal team do a little bit of research and identify that the fact that the posted fine on some of those signs is out of step with the current ordinance does not interfere with our ability to enforce the current fine structure. But in light of that, we are generating a letter to property owners, or at least the ones we have on file, reminding them that we did change the fine structure through action of the board, telling them what that fine structure is and encouraging them to take it upon themselves to replace the signs on their property, or at least the portion of it that identifies the fines. On March second, the PD is hosting our entry level written exam orientation for new police officers. That'll take place at eight AM at the Antioch Community High School. So if you see a crowd and a bunch of squad cars over there that morning, that's what that's for. I am happy to report that we have seen a, a rather significant uptick this time in the number of applications that we've seen. Uh, we are seeking to hire two part-time community service officers to replace one position that's been vacant for some time. And then the additional vacancy that was recently created due to one of our young, uh, CSOs moving on to a full-time career opportunity. So if you know of somebody that's over the age of eighteen and may be interested in a future career in law enforcement, those positions do remain available. Uh, good news, we finally were notified last week that IDOT has approved our long-awaited block license plate reader permits. The downside of that news is about ten minutes after we got that email, we were notified that the IDOT-approved mounting poles are on back order for that. So, one step forward, a half step backward. We're told that the delay should not take too long. Uh, we remain in close contact with our vendors, so we still are hopeful to see those before spring. I'll keep the board up to date on that. And then just recognizing, uh, staff anniversaries at the PD this month, Sergeant Andre Baderati will reach her tenth year with the department. And then there's gonna be a little bit of a change in the future monthly reporting for the PD. As you know, I'm, I'm one of those individuals that's committed to fostering kind of a cul- culture of continuous improvement within the department. Uh, recently Commander Smith, who's with us tonight, had expressed that one of his development goals was to enhance some of his public presenting skills, um, which is a crucial aspect of professional growth within a command level officer. Given my current dual responsibilities, I, I found it necessary to delegate some of the tasks that I would normally do to ensure seamless operations of the apartment. The current circumstances present me with the opportunity to help him grow towards a future goal. So moving forward, he and I are gonna collaborate in producing our monthly report, and he's gonna take on presenting to you on a regular basis. So if you start seeing his, uh, bright smiley face here, that's why. I know he's copying my haircut these days. Uh, Commander Smith's first audition is scheduled tonight, so he's just gonna share a couple of updates on a couple of the impactful ca- impactful cases that our department's been working within our community. So if you have any questions or concerns on, on this next initiative, please let me know. Um, I just feel this is gonna help me oversee the critical roles that I'm fulfilling while I'm in his professional growth. That's why, that's why we're trying, so.
Mayor and the board. Guttow, I'd like to first thank you for speaking as well and developed, uh, major characteristics of a great trait of a leader. Peter India, I respect you and appreciate it. And thank you, board, for giving me this opportunity to grow and develop in my career as well. Uh, tonight, I'd like to talk about our overdoses that we've had, and even though we've had the initiative since the last quarter of twenty-twenty-two and twenty-twenty-three, as we saw that spike. Nice presentation I have on there. We're in twenty-twenty-two, we saw that spike of twenty-two overdoses, and we had two fatals. And under Chief Gutsho, he had, uh, created the initiative to have the Antioch High School opiated drug awareness event. I think some of you had attended. Um, and then we sent interventionists out onto the roadway where we've kind of mapped out hotspots into the village, and those interventionists, we would not share personal details of addresses or anything, but they would go door-to-door and hand out Narcan and treat, um, train them on Narcan. Um, so you'll see that in the, uh, twenty-twenty-three, we had a forty-one percent reduction in our cases of overdoses, which um, we want to get it lower, but we're pretty happy with the forty-one percent. Hopefully in twenty-twenty-three, or I mean, I'm sorry, in the twenty-twenty-four, we can even reduce that further. What's helpful with the reduction is not only the public education, the awareness and the interventionists, but I'd like to talk to you about two cases that we recently have put together. Uh, under the leadership of Detective Sergeant Andre Baderati in our investigation section, after a sixteen-month-long investigation, and we were able to successfully arrest an offender who had sold a fatal uh, fentanyl, perk thirty pill to a, a eighteen-year-old kid. Uh, fentanyl perk thirty pill to a eighteen year old kid. Uh, with the investigations unit had learned of the individual's downtown area, they conducted surveillance on him, conducted a traffic stop. And this is what they obtained from the vehicle during the traffic stop, a loaded nine millimeter handgun. And thirty other perk thirties that they stopped from getting in the hands of the kids. So I applaud our investigation section and. As of the twenty fourth of last month, Honorable Judge Patricia Fix of Lake County sentenced him to seven and a half years D O C. Yes, sir. The next case I'd like to talk about is one that's in works and um, we should have charges we're expected to have in the next two weeks, two to three weeks. We've got um, everything that the state's attorney wanted us to bring forward to bring forward a forth the charge for drug induced homicide. This also resulted in an eighteen year old kid who was uh, who died from a sold perk dirty in our town. The offender in this one, we've learned through our collaboration with Lake County Meg that he is a a big supplier in our town. More than one thousand pills a week is coming into our town. So this will be a great arrest when we make it. And I anticipate at the next board meeting, I'll be able to give you that update. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Thank you. Um, welcome to the podium. Any trustee reports? Just your reports. On the side. All right, I forgot three things in my mayor report, so I'll be quick. Um, one is, um, we have been working very hard. Um, many people in village staff legal to acquire three easements that are needed for the Grim Road property. And we are in a very tight deadline um, to apply for a significant grant. So the next board meeting, which I remind everybody is going to be on a Monday night at five o'clock. There is very likely to be some information given to an advance that I'd really like you to consider, um, you know, study it. Ask the questions that are necessary so we can pass those hopefully on the twenty sixth because we need to get this in for those grants. So we're close, but not there yet. We also had three liquor commission hearings um, recently. The police um, had three local businesses that um, sold alcohol to um. Underage purchasers. We had a hearing um, a couple of weeks ago. Um, the village did fine each business two thousand dollars. Um, the two of the three owners were here, the third owner who did then call in was assessed an additional five hundred dollar fine. So they were all. I guess here and understood the severity of what happened. And then finally, um, if you have a birthday around a board meeting and the and the second number in the birthday ends in a zero. We usually sing happy birthday and I was able to acquire this beauty. Weekend, so. Happy birthday before we adjourn, all right? One, two, three. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday, dear Jimmy. Happy birthday to you. All right, um, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So second.
Motion trustee Pierce, second trustee Peterson, uh, roll call, all in favor.
Aye.
Me opposed. All right, we're adjourned for um, five minutes and then we'll do the committee of the whole meeting. All right, thank you. All right, call the um, committee of the whole meeting to order at seven sixteen, roll call, please.
Uh, trustee Berman.
Here.
Trustee Bluthart is present. Trustee McNeil.
Here.
Trustee Pierce.
Present.
Trustee Mason.
Here.
Trustee Peterson.
Present.
Mayor Gartner.
Present. Um. No mayor report, no citizens have signed up to address the board for the committee of the whole. First item is approval of the January twenty fourth, twenty twenty four committee, the whole meeting minutes as presented. Do I have a motion and a seconds?
So moved.
Second trustee McNeil, second trustee Berman, roll call, please.
Berman.
Yes.
McNeil.
Yes.
Pierce.
Aye.
Mason.
Yes.
Peterson.
Yes.
Five voting yes, motion carries. Next item is discussion regarding the final steps of the parks master plan. Um, Director Quilty, and then we have Doug Fair from Hitchcock on Zoom.
Hi, welcome. I'm hoping to help you all understand this master plan. Um, it started as it's the. Let me read the strategies that when you hear him talk about Doug, talk about strategies, those are what the. Residents that from the input of all our meetings of what they saw was important for our community, what they thought was necessary. To be fixed, replaced, you know, so and so forth. Um, it is a guiding tool. It lists the different strategies. There's things that are just a study that could cost, you know, thirty thousand or a complete development of a park. It is up to you and then the the money that it states is to help you understand what needs to be set aside. For in the budget for these projects. Um, it is a guiding tool.
Like he said, he said this picture, he wanted me to take that off the screen, that picture, but I left it up there. Yeah, no.
It's just a guiding tool for you.
Okay, sorry, Mary.
That's okay.
I'm like, what's on the board? Yeah.
So I I I mean, I am open to any questions that you have about this, or I like I said, Doug is online. He is with Hitchcock. Design that produces this master plan. Any questions?
Discussion board.
I I I think the only discussion comes down to the financing of of these plans and where the money comes from. As I previously stated, I think we need to set aside some of our new income streams to to fund our parks.
Definitely.
That should be one of our discussions going forward.
And in one of the um, the packet, last month's packet, it showed you like what each project potentially could cost. So you can choose which project is most important or which we can financially support.
Well, here consumes bringing in a lot of money.
Um, we did uh, meet and start talking about some of the budgetary items. So. Did you meet with Zady yet?
Yes, today.
Okay, okay. So I know there's been some discussion about yeah, setting aside money for parks and figuring out how we can move this plan along and. With the board pick what might be the priorities from that plan and. Um, you know, even if we have to stretch some of these out from five to ten years, at least have them on the radar. Any questions for uh, the director or Hitchcock?
Yep.
Trustee Mason.
Yep. Scott, oh, good.
I did.
He did.
Thank you, Ed.
Anything else?
I have a quick question.
Yes.
With the pickleball courts, I know it next year you're doing evaluations and things, but then it also looks like in fiscal year three, we're still making evaluations. Or how long would that take? Because I know it's kind of a popular thing right now. I don't know how quickly that could move along. Do you need two years of evaluation?
No, no, not at all. That's you could spread it over the two years. Okay.
And for instance, not to, yeah, not to put words in um, uh, director's mouth is. You know, we have, we're building a new park across the street, which is going to have upkeep and maintenance and there's going to be expense. Um, we're going to have to make some philosophical decisions like. Is Centennial Park going to be the same.
Destination.
Scope, or is it just going to be a neighborhood park with some other features? So those are things we'll have to decide as a board. At one point, there was like a one million dollar plan to make that a inclusive park. So now we have one half a mile away, so. Any uh, anything else on the parks plan? All right, thank you.
If you're happy with this, we will bring Hitchcock will bring back the final draft, the final book of the master plan at the. April meeting.
Okay, all right, thank you. And has this been um, is when is this going to be approved by the parks board before it comes back to us? Or the final, like the final plan?
Yes.
Okay.
It's up to your approval. Yes.
Okay.
Their recommendation.
All right, thank you. Um, number three is discussion regarding a site plan review for Antioch Community High School. Located at eleven thirty three Main Street related to parking area modifications. Um, Sarah Ronan, the engineer for the school district is on the Zoom and Director Garrigan.
Yes, thank you, Your Honor. Uh, this matter comes before you this evening on a proposed site plan. Uh, Antioch High School is in the process of expanding their cafeteria. As part of that proposed expansion, uh, they are proposing to reconfigure. Uh, their proposed a southern parking lot, uh, just adjacent to the Walgreens site. Um, specifically, the applicant is proposing to convert, there's existing uh, several handicap parking spaces. Uh, along with a regular parking spaces, specifically the applicant is proposing to basically convert. All the proposed parking spaces themselves to all handicapped. That will require a reconfiguration of parking lot, new parking spaces. Um, there'll be some revisions to the existing sidewalk. Um, with a better entrance into this new proposed cafeteria entrance. Also, there'll be some utility improvements. Um, so staff did have a chance to take this. Uh, this was recommended for approval by the client commission. Um, so with that, I'll be more than happy to answer any questions. Um, again, uh, the the engineer for the applicant is actually here on Zoom. Uh, if if there's any specific questions relating to this proposed project. Thank you.
Um, like, I don't think according, I don't think Sarah, I don't see her on there. Um, so. Is any questions you're gonna have to, uh, I guess fly by the seat of your pants.
That's fine. No, I'll be more happy answering questions.
Any questions regarding this project?
I do. I have one question. Um. As you pull into the high school off of Route eighty three and you know, Walgreens is on one side of you, the high school, is that?
This is the area we're talking about, yes.
Is that entrance going to still be there?
Yes, entrance, they're they're not proposing any modifications to the the access on Route eighty three. This is the area right, be just. Due north of Walgreens, there's adjacent trash enclosures there. Uh, there's a main entrance, it's the cafeteria area. Cafeteria will be expanded. Uh, these parking spaces will all be converted to all handicap spaces.
Okay.
They're not increasing the number of spaces, they're simply converting all of them to handicap.
Okay, that's all I have.
Trustee Pierce, you have a question?
Yeah, I feel like this is deja vu, like we discussed this already. Is this another step in the process?
No, this this has not come before the village board. We we did, our last site plan we had for high school was out near the athletic fields. There were some reconfiguration, configuration of parking lot and but now this is, this is a new proposal.
The first time they've changed.
Yeah.
Yes.
So it sounds like.
Yeah.
They could move along and come back. The only thing that as staff discussed, this may affect the lineup for the uh. Parades, so start thinking about other places for the Fourth of July parade, uh, how we can line up there. So if it's under construction.
Wow, okay.
Um, all right, the next item is item four, discussion regarding a tobacco license request. From vape zone smoke shop to be located at four seventeen Route one seventy three. Um. The owner, uh, Mr. Assad is here in person, I believe.
Right. Hello. Uh, we're looking to open the smoke shop uh, on four one seven Illinois Route one seventy three.
Right, um, that is in the um, outlets. Um, where Betty's, um, there Rosati's over there now. Okay, that's the location. Any questions from the board on this item? Questions down here?
I'll give you a statement.
All right. Trustee Pierce?
Yeah, I'm just curious if we have a prohibition. I I know this was a lot of discussion when we came up with our ordinances on the tobacco ordinances and stuff like that on on the closeness of this and um. I I'm curious why it's before us if we have a prohibition on them being close, close within a certain distance of another tobacco shop. I I realize you have the. You have the right to ask, but um.
They are the.
Yeah, of course.
The um, the ordinance doesn't allow two uh, class B tobacco dealers, which is a primary tobacco dealer. Within five hundred feet of each other. We only have one of those, um, that's discount tobacco on Route eighty three. Or class C, which is the e-cigarette vaping um, licensed to be within five hundred feet and the closest one to this location is um, Murphy. Gas station, which is five hundred and ninety two.
What about Walmart itself?
Walmart is further.
Walmart is further than the gas station. And then um, do we know, are there any of, how many licenses does the village have and do we have available licenses?
There there are no available licenses. Up to the board to add a license, that's what.
So we're working to convert that one seventy three, the marketplace and all that into nice developments and stuff. And we're also building a chain of smoke related facilities going down one seventy three. I'm I'm not asking you, I'm just making a statement. I'm sorry.
Waiting to see, I was waiting to see Lori, I was waiting to see Lori's answer.
It doesn't, it doesn't include you. I'm just uh, I'm just saying, you know. Pretty soon, we we're just going to be smoke shops down one seventy three and it's, I don't necessarily agree with that.
All right, trustee Mason.
I'm going to be a one hundred percent upfront, no vote. Secretary had a heart attack. Cardiologist said it's because of vaping.
That's hard to hear though.
Yeah, so. You know, that liquid vitamin E they put in there and the other stuff that's unknown, that some people doing it, I think this stuff is poison.
We're mostly focused on selling cigars and tobacco products.
Okay.
Accessories.
I'm cool with cigars. I I smoke cigars, okay, I'm cool with that. But. If you're just a cigar shop, I'd be, that's cool. Cigar shop, there's no cigar shop. But you're gonna have the other products, you're gonna have the paraphernalia, you're gonna have the vaping. You're gonna have the cigarettes, which are all. Cigars I can deal with. The other stuff that they think that the silent killing, there's kids that are twenty two years old that vape. And all of a sudden, they're they're in the intensive care because they think, oh, it's it's it doesn't do nothing. And then they're in 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 the ICU. I think it's poison. Cardiologist says it's poison. It constricts your arteries. You know, to give a new license is is I'm a noble and anybody up here is just saying, kid. Give you a loaded gun, it can go off anytime. I'm going to be a noble and I'm a safety guy. And I I was a former paramedic. You know, I see the harms of what what's in that stuff. I think it's a dangerous product. And what's what's worse about the stuff is the abuse when he's, when everybody sits there. Smokes the vape in a restaurant or bar because they think they can get away with the stuff. It's just an abusive product.
I had a question for you before I go to trustee Peterson. Do you guys operate any of your locations in other towns?
Yeah, uh, I own one in uh, Gurnee, Illinois, Waukesha, Wisconsin, and Bracine, Wisconsin.
All the same name?
No, different names.
What's the name of the one in Gurnee?
Lava Vape Shop.
Lava Vape?
Yeah.
Trustee Peterson.
So we don't have any uh, licenses available. We're here tonight. Because if we vote for this, we have to create a new license and we already turned someone down over by the high school because. We didn't want to make a new license and we did not want to enhance the numbers. Not to mention the fact he was across the street from the high school.
I have this, so we're here to see if, obviously we move this, discuss it moving forward to a a vote at the board level. I have to ask a legal question of the attorney before I. I'm just wanting to make sure, see if, you know, they're entitled to have the vote regardless, um, you know, if we move it from the cow to the next regular business meeting.
Okay.
All right, that's.
Are we going to get a consensus or um? Can we do that or should we just wait to put it on the village board?
Okay, I was just asking about the fees and the application, how far they were in the process of this. So. You know, whether they can make a decision at that point based on what they hear tonight.
Okay.
Where it goes to the board. Yeah.
Okay, I'm not in favor of moving forward with another license, creating another license. For um, a smoke shop that we already have some. I don't believe we need any more. That's my opinion.
Any questions down here, comments?
You're getting. To get this right, even if the board is a, say fifty fifty tonight says. No, we don't want it. Yes, we do want it. And we decide as as a group that we don't want to move forward. And we decide as as a group that we don't want to move forward, he still has a right to cut, to say, I would like this on the village agenda. Is that correct?
That's what I was trying to clear, so clarifying with Jimmy, that's what I wanted. Yeah, you guys talk.
I'm sorry, we're discussing procedure up here.
He's talking about procedure.
Alright.
Oh, Oracle of Wisdom, can you enlighten us?
So.
Yeah, um so.
Maybe a little Alzheimer's, and I forget what he's. Forgot, um so two things, one, your first uh. The board determines what goes on the agenda and per the chair. So there is the law in the state of Illinois relative to what can go on an agenda, what can't go on an agenda. It's determined by the elected or appointed officials as applicable. So you can say this doesn't go on an agenda or not. If one of you brought something in, it goes on an agenda. But this is not that case here. Um the other question that people always ask is what about the fact that a person paid? And they paid a fee to go forward. Um our ordinance was well-written in such a manner that it allows for a refund if it doesn't go forward. That doesn't mean you can't put it forward and.
Vote on it?
It just means that the the rules in the state of Illinois say that the board determines what goes on the agenda and then certain appointed officials have some say on that as well.
Alright, um.
The license fee is refunded minus fifty dollars.
Okay, okay. So I'm gonna make um I guess semi an executive decision that um if the petitioner wishes to have the full board hear this and vote on this at the next meeting, um I believe that they have the constitutional right to do that. But if they decide between now and then that they do not plan to move forward at the next hearing, that they should get a a refund of their fee. So um I would talk to the clerk about that process. So if they decide they don't want on the next meeting and they're not moving forward, we'll give them their feedback. If they do, then I believe they should have the right to be voted on.
And I I tend to agree with you because I think everybody has a right to petition their government, even even if the board says we don't want you to. Um but I I would advise you, there's at least three votes now.
Alright, alright, thank you, sir. Thank you for coming. I appreciate it. Um and then obviously the village clerk contacted her, so she could walk through it, okay? Alright, thank you. Um next item is number five, discussion regarding an extension of a special use permit for consume Antioch for an additional six months from the date of January twelfth, twenty twenty-four. We have Director Garrigan and Steve Weber from Consume here in person.
Yes, thank you, Your Honor. I I should recall the village board did approve a permit home for um consume cannabis, um which has a temporary operation uh on Main Street, as you well know. Um but as a condition of the special use, when that was approved back in July uh twelfth of two thousand twenty-three, there was a stipulation in the special use that the applicant would be required to come back um for an extension of the special use if in fact they did not have a certificate of occupancy. Now, what the holdup has been, um unfortunately has been I dot. The applicant has submitted submitted revised plans to I dot for a full access access permit. As you know, they will be required to have an access permit before they proceed with construction. Uh they have submitted revised engineering, so I know there have been engineering comments. The engineering is not the, not the holdup, it's actually I dot. So once we get a access permit for I dot, I believe the applicant and the builder are both here this evening. They plan to proceed uh with construction of a new nine thousand square foot building, which will be the future home, permanent home of uh uh consume Antioch cannabis. So with that, um again, I'll be more than happy to answer any questions. Um we anticipate the applicant requesting an additional one uh another extension of six months.
Any discussion on this item, questions? Alright, um so we will move this to the uh. Is it, well, if we have a, move it to the March for consent. Well, it'll either be on a consent agenda the next meeting in the February or the first March.
When's the expiration of, it says January twelfth here and we're already in February.
Again, but again, they have not proceeded with construction, so they're just asking for another extension. They're they expire, special use expired um basically on the twelfth. So procedurally, they will get another extension. They not started construction. In accordance with our special use, the special use is good technically for at least a one-year period. Um but there was a special six-month provision in this um to protect the village. As you know, unfortunately, we've had a cannabis license company that did not proceed with their license. So to protect the village, uh village council incorporate this stipulation, so they are asking for an additional six-month extension.
Alright, thank you. Um next is item number six, discussion regarding the purchase of security cameras for the open space developments. Amy? You don't get to talk that much here.
There's a reason.
Alright.
I'm better behind this.
Alright.
So as part of the open um development across the street, uh we are recommending to add security cameras to um better monitor and protect that investment. So this proposal is for seventy-five thousand dollars, a little over seventy-five thousand dollars, seventy-five thousand one hundred and eighty-nine dollars and fourteen cents. Um I have been working with Imperial Surveillance since February of twenty twenty-three to identify the uh best locations based on the landscape design and the electrical design. So as part of the bid packet that did go out was the conduit, but not part of that was the actual purchase of the security cameras. So I am here today to ask um to move forward with this and if there's any questions. Uh right now, in the village, we currently have forty-five cameras. Most of the, a lot of them have been either installed or upgraded by Imperial Surveillance. Um they offer ninety-two different views. These eighteen additional cameras would allow fifty-seven different viewpoints within the open space development. Uh so it would capture a lot of different angles within there.
Alright, discussion, questions for Amy? Yeah, and for a reference, the original, first bid you received was what?
Right, so I did go out, um so Imperial Surveillance did, uh we went out to RFP in twenty eighteen and Imperial Surveillance did. Um we went with them for that RFP at that time and has been the preferred vendor. But we did go out and I did speak with other vendors regarding this project based on the um seventy-five thousand dollar quote. I wanted to make sure that we uh we're doing our due diligence. I reached out to another vendor that has done other work of for the Antioch Township. Um and they came in at a hundred and fifty-one thousand, so.
Trusty Pierce?
Um I just have two questions.
Yes.
On the layout here where you show the the coverage areas?
Yes.
One of the main areas I think that is missed is actually the bridge itself.
So when you are looking, the the two angles coming down will get the stream and the bridge from both sides. So they're, I believe they're in yellow and yeah. So right here and then right here through. So you will be getting the stream and then the bridge. Based on the, the the issue that we have is we want to do placements based on the electrical and also based on the lighting that is there and working within those constraints. We will also be getting as as long as you, so the coverage that you are seeing, it goes beyond that, which is just the basic angle. So these are actually farther reaching. Um if you would like, we do have some of these cameras at other locations, including the police department. I can send you shots from the police department to show. So from the police department, we can actually get the parking lot from Dunkin' Donuts. So we, it, they are very far-reaching um with their angles.
Are they, are they like the? Are they like a square camera pointing out with the, or is they like an access camera that's got a dome and it like you'd see in a casino?
Mary, can you go do the arrow down? Um just go to the next page, maybe? There you go. So the cameras in blue would be the dome multi, um so there are four lenses within that camera um to do multidirectional. So the the cameras that are blue on the map would be, are indicated with those cameras.
Okay.
Um and then if you go down one more, the red cameras look like that. And I can send you, all of these cameras have been implemented at other locations within the village. So I can send you how they look within, on the buildings also or within, especially over at the Aquatic Center. Uh we do have quite a few of these. And then the green cameras that are on that, the the map um would look like this.
Are these all P O E cameras?
They are P O E cameras. The server would be located in the the I T room um behind the cafe as part of that building. We will have internet there and a firewall there, so the police will be able to um access these cameras from the station and pull any video that's needed.
Okay. I just installed a whole bunch of them this week somewhere else, so they're they're decent cameras. They're they're, they are the major Sony, Sony quit making cameras, so Axis took over all the business.
Yes, we've had very good luck with them so far in all the facilities and low rate of failure.
Now, the camera that the construction company is using on the pole that's more towards the the band shell, it's on the other side, the north side of Orchard, no, south side of Orchard. Are, is that something we can take over when they leave to give us a whole bird's eye view of the whole park?
I'm not familiar with that camera, but I can discuss it with them.
Would you, because I I think that if you get a bird's eye, the whole park may be beneficial.
Um any other discussion questions?
For everybody that wasn't on the board, to get cameras, I've been fighting for these cameras past administration. To get cameras, thank you. Just to get cameras, it was a struggle with my fatigue. Took me two terms to get cameras in the building, two terms. And thank goodness we moved this far with the cameras because boy did it catch a lot of bad stuff. And to get these cameras on here, thank you. This and you know, once we move here, we gotta look at Peterson Park, figure that situation out. Um if it's all about safety. And this is, this is a giant leap from what we had with former administrations and police chiefs and whatnot. We don't need cameras. Now we're seeing the need for cameras. This, and and for anybody listening, this is not big boy where they're on all the time and they're gonna catch. This is only when there's something happens that they can go back and look to see what happened, so.
Correct.
On where a person's monitoring, like at Walmart or something else, so this is not big brother watching all the time.
Alright.
I have.
Trusty Berman, yep?
I have a question, but it's, I guess, the reason I want to ask it is because being that this is gonna be an additional cost. Um it, this was, it was brought up and I can't remember who had mentioned it, but as far as with the gazebo, because we had, we've brought that to the agenda to lock in prices before they went on. Um it was mentioned at some point that we are paying a fee for storage, but I don't recall, I unless I don't recall discussing that portion of it, but I I I'd like to know I guess how much we've spent since we've done that to get a better idea of, you know, so far.
Sure.
Everything, so.
Trusty, if I could just ask a fair thing, question? You seeking what we've spent additional relative to the per, the gazebo or you're seeking what we spent additional total project?
Um, sorry, I guess whatever, was it budgeted for that, for the stor- storage of it? Or I, that's where I'm unclear when it comes.
Yeah, and if I recollect, that one was about a six thousand dollar cost that for the storage of that piece. Um there have been, um obviously the change orders that were presented to the board. Um there has been some um discussion between the uh constructor strand and the um and the contractor regarding additional extras related to delay and um storage of the um vegetative mat that is still in negotiation. Um and I believe maybe Denny or Jeff can um speak to this. There have been some areas that they've been able to cut for some savings so that they're, you know, under budget on those items so far or we're under where they thought they were gonna be. Um but I think that was about six thousand dollars for the gazebo.
Certainly.
Maybe, maybe to help the Trusty Berman here, so that maybe we want to know what we spent on the park so far. I know a couple of months ago you gave us an update and it was kind of a break even savings and the extras. And so maybe uh give us an update at the finance meeting, um what we spent so far on the park and then just the the actual cost for the gazebo.
And and one of the things I'll say about um uh Mr. Gutcho and uh Denny that we've been talking about a lot with these other projects, um is talking about, when we're talking about the price of these projects, you know, the numbers we're seeing are, you know, construction costs, but we need to start talking, and again, I'm, we're gonna, they're gonna be seeing these numbers. What is the, what are the soft costs? What are the engineering costs? What are the design costs? I mean, all those costs go into the project, you know, and they're significant. So when we're looking at these things, you know, we can say, oh, this costs twelve point five million dollars, but that's what it costs for the building itself. There's obviously other costs that go into it, so we're trying to make sure that that is front and center on these discussions.
Yeah, we're we're taking very measured steps, learning lessons as we go. Open space project kind of predates me a little bit, so I'll have to do a little bit of homework on some of the costs that were expended. Certainly happy to get that information for the board, but every time you do a project like this, you learn new things. So we're taking measured steps to make sure there's move forward with the the next projects that we're able to come to a board with a, with an all-in cost um projection in advance.
Uh Mayor, this, this is Ada, if I can chime in.
Sure, sure.
The gazebo, the additional for the gazebo was only over, a little over three thousand dollars. And that was for the storage for the remaining of the time to the project is completed. I also have a current report. I'll email it to you, all of you tonight um with the update on where we are. So far, we spent in the park and what funding we have available. As soon as we log off, I will send that to all of you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Welcome, sorry.
I forgot you were there, sorry. It was like that movie, Oh God, start talking.
Well, just to follow up on Jeff's line of conversation there on the, looking at what they're building, how they're building it. You know, what we were presented before, I don't think, I I don't think was quite acceptable to the board. Um and and maybe I'm wrong. I I don't want to speak for the whole board. I, you know, to me, it was a little exorbitant. Um and I like drive through Grace Lake and I see the public works that the state has and it's just a uh one of those concrete walls and big dome tent that they can expand or whatever, you know? Plus a nice facility for the public works guys, but you know, that's, to me, it's an example of looking at everything outside the box and coming up with what what actually works and what we can afford, because I don't want to deprive them of what they need, but I also don't know if we can afford what we were shown before.
Yeah, and 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 those, those are some of those measured steps that we're taking. And obviously the, the board has the prerogative to set what the budget is gonna be on these projects. And we're working very hard to bring the scope of the project in line with what the board is comfortable allocating for those projects themselves. Um you know, it's, it's our goal to deliver these projects on time and within the budget that's established and approved by the board.
Alright, um so to bring it full circle back to the cameras, we will move the camera part to the board meeting um for just approval or discussion on the, that bid. Alright? Thank you, um everybody. The next one is number seven. This came up at the last meeting, discussion regarding ordinance, amending the Antioch Village Code regarding the unauthorized use of electronic electric vehicle charging stations within the village of Antioch. electric vehicle charging stations within the village of Antioch, Illinois. Again, if I remember correctly, this relates to people parking in um spots that uh are designated for electronic vehicles. Um Chief Gutcho, if you want to discuss any further, I know we're just trying to codify this so that we have a plan going forward.
Yes, this uh, this this ordinance mirrors the state statute, will allow us to prosecute these matters under an adjudication administrative hearing rather than having to take them into state court. Uh it's a little bit more efficient process for us internally and allows us to um to handle a local problem at a local level.
Alright, so everyone's comfortable moving that forward, I assume?
I'm comfortable moving it forward. I just want, wonder what the priority level of driving around to the few electric vehicle charging stations there are. You know, is is there gonna be, I mean, we got, no, we don't, we don't always seem to have parking enforcement downtown. We don't always seem to have, uh I see people parking handicap spaces all the time and I'm like, are we just gonna add one more parking ordinance thing that never gets enforced? I, 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 I don't know how else to say it. Are we gonna, are we actually enforce the the parking rules?
That's a first statement. Um you know, unfortunately, due to our staffing, a lot of the parking concerns are complaint driven. The mechanism to deal with this type of complaint currently exists under state statute, and we could take them into branch court. You know, where the, where the fines and the, the way they're processed is a little bit different. Um this allows us to handle it locally um on a very similar fine basis, but it doesn't, you don't have to worry about being a reportable offense, showing up on a driver's uh driving history, those sort of things. You know, I don't want, I don't want the board to think that, you know, we already have police officers out being the electric vehicle parking police, but just like handicap parking violations or, you know, fire lane violations, we do receive complaints from the public on those and we take all complaints from the public seriously. And this just gives us a little bit more efficient way to to approach those at a local level. Okay, thank you, that makes sense.
I'm telling you, he's gonna get four and a grand from Chevy, I understand, and that's coming soon.
Uh plus, 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 we are installing E V charging stations at at the open space project. Um I I don't think as time goes on, we're gonna see less vehicle charging stations. I think we're gonna see more and more of them crop up throughout the area. Um so we're just trying to be a little bit proactive as these things start to come into our community that we've got, got an efficient way to deal with them. It's a, it's a, the administrative hearing process is is much smoother internally for us to deal with. Uh it's easier for the officers to to manage, you know, they do have a violation, it's, you know, it's not thirty boxes on a, on a state parking violation we have to write. You know, it's a very simple process for the officers, save them time as well, and get them back out to, you know, what I would consider to be more important issues.
Just, just one more thing, this is more for your administrator hat than your chief of police hat. Um, once we start getting these E V stations in and they're in, on village property and stuff, it's obviously belongs to the village. I don't think we should be providing free electricity to people, that we need to have some sort of charging function and financial charging function in there so that people pay for what they use.
Your timing and bringing that up is actually uncanny. We had a recent internal discussion about that last week. Um certainly, and again, it's the board's decision on how we approach those things. But understanding that when you come to a gas station, we don't offer free gas for vehicles. So there's probably an equitable way to approach that, where where E V owners are charged a, charged a fee for the electricity costs that the village will incur as a result of them plugging into our stations. Again, that's a, that's a decision for the board to give us an introduction on.
Or we get a solar farm to pay for it.
Or let me help answer, there's companies out there that put advertising, say electricity's free, shared by the advertising or the screens. So while you're sitting there, you're reading a stupid advertisement. So it's free electricity, they pay for the electricity. The charging stations, they're convenience, they put it in, they're given free electricity, they're paying for it. Consumers, it's a free, so it's no cost to the consumer. So it makes coming to Antioch, using our downtown services restaurant, whatever, and and typically it's a two-hour two-hour time limit on these free, free ones. And if it's a Tesla charger, then then it's usually a pick, it's a, it's a shared charge. So if it's on property, then the property owner gets a share of that electricity charge.
I don't care how it's paid for, as long as the taxpayer doesn't pay for somebody else to drive their own car.
I just don't put one of my spots, I'm not gonna electric car anytime soon. I know you guys are trying to give it away one other time, so. Alright, we will put that on for the next uh portion. We also have another ordinance to discuss, which is number eight. Discussion regarding ordinance adding section seven dash one dash six to the Antioch Village Code for the use of snowmobiles within the village of Antioch.
Yeah, this again is a, is a housekeeping matter. This stems from resident concerns related to snowmobiles operating within some of the the right of ways of the village and on our sidewalks. Again, many of the, well, I shouldn't say many, all of this language is currently um captured in the Illinois Snowmobile Registration Act. We had the ability to tighten up some of the language to make sure that we don't have snowmobiles driving down our sidewalks, on our streets, within our parks and causing damage to to our infrastructure. So we, we brought this into um the ordinance for the same manner to provide a little bit more streamlined way for us to address them and process them rather than having to write them into state court, um which again, you know, not to, not to disparage any of the courts, but they, they have a lot more important things to deal with than snowmobile things, so I think we'll have a better result dealing with them on the local level through our administrative hearing officer.
So what does this basically say? That the snowmobiles can't operate unless they conform to certain things and only go on marked trails within the village, and we have no marked trails within the village, so they basically can't drive them in the village, or can they drive them on roads as long as they got their headlight and their taillight or?
So the, the state code um allows them to operate along roadways and designated areas so long as they're ten feet off of the roadway itself. Typically in the village, we'll put them onto other, on, on to private property owners. There was a little bit of latitude, um again, this, this rises out a little bit of a gap where we had some resident complaints and concerns about snowmobiles driving down the sidewalks, not necessarily crossing them. So very, very similar to um the golf carts that we have in town. The state code allows them to cross roadways perpendicularly um if they're emerging from a designated crossing. Again, as you pointed out, we don't currently have any of those in-town designated trails. Uh this ordinance does allow us to do so if we ever decide to um participate in some sort of a trail system. Does not take away from a private property owner's ability to allow or ride snowmobiles on their own property. It does require a snowmobile operator that's riding on another's property to have permission and consent of that owner to be on the premises. And again, the big, the biggest concern of prohibition is, is making sure that we protect our infrastructure and resources being the parks, the sidewalks, the the dish lines, those sort of things.
And back to the, the enforcement of the parking ordinances and stuff like that. It seems to me on the Fourth of July, everybody in town owns fireworks and taking care of those people doesn't seem to be with anybody's, with any, it's worse than the, the southern border, you know, and when it snows, um everybody all of a sudden owns a snowmobile in Antioch.
Yeah, yeah, you know, I've, I've been policing our streets for twenty-five years, you know, we certainly don't have a proliferation of problems with snowmobiles riding on the roads. But when we do have resident complaints brought to us, I feel a duty to be responsive to those complaints and find ways that we can, we can address them in the most efficient and appropriate manner possible. And based on our work with our legal team and discussing it internally with the staff at least department, we felt that the administrative hearing process again was the best option for us to be able to deal with these at the local level. We could certainly keep it status quo. Um you know, we have written citations under this code into the state courts um with mixed results. And just a lot of times it depends on the, on the judge's current docket load, whether or not they, they have interest in spending time on any of these cases, and I think that we'll just be able to more appropriately resolve them.
How do you generally, how do you generally catch a snowmobile, or you follow the track to their house, or?
Well, or, or fortunately.
Your neighbor goes, that guy there?
Not to give away trade secrets, right, but no, fortunately, most operators that are out there are responsible, right? I can't say that it's just like cars that sometimes you don't have someone take off on you and flee from you, I mean, it's just a rally life, we have it in cars, motorcycles, snowmobiles, and sure, at some point, golf carts. But fortunately, most people that are out there operating are, are doing so responsibly. And oftentimes are able to resolve these through educational um opportunities to talk to them. But there are the habitual individuals that we have out there that we do have to escalate in how we, how we deal with them and 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 bring our enforcement to, to a citation.
Yeah, and don't get me wrong, I'm, I'm not in favor of snowmobiles riding all over, how I'm back on, in the village, because they, I, as you know, I've got a nice empty lot next to my house. Until I started putting up obstacles on there, it was a snowmobile track and a bicycle track and a baseball field and everything else somebody wanted to turn it into. I've had my, my sump, sump line crushed by a snowmobile, you know, so I, I get they, they can be a pain.
Yeah, and and the goal for, for this ordinance really is, you know, when a resident or a community stakeholder does call us and express a concern where they feel that you know, their private property rights are being infringed upon by people riding across their property, that the answer is from the officer that we, we have a means to deal with this. You know, the last thing we ever want to tell somebody is there's nothing we can do to respond to your concern and your problem. This gives us the tools necessary in order to respond to our community's concerns.
Okay, thanks for the discussion.
Thank you, so we'll move that on.
Yep.
Alright, go ahead.
I'm sorry.
You had A T Bs, George.
Good, yes.
Slash A T Bs.
If you would like, we.
Well.
Yes.
And here in Harbor, we got the A T Bs jumping down the streets and in the community to land, it's, it's, it's getting a bit.
We'll certainly have our lead, our team take a look at it. We're happy to address the concern.
That was quick.
Well, I'm, I'm not giving out.
Alright, oh, I think we got it. I think we're good. Alright, next one, last item on the committee, the whole is discussion regarding an intergovernment agreement with School District Thirty-four and the village of Lake Villa for a school resource officer Oakland School. Um I know we've talked about this many times with the seventy-five percent um seventy-five, twenty-five costs um splits, and we're waiting for Lake Villa's signing off, is that it, Jeff?
Yeah, so the, the actual I G A, with the, with the, with the business terms of the resource officer was approved by the board last month. This seeks to allow us to extend those S R O services at the district's request to the Oakland campus, which is located within Lake Villa Township. A little bit of an uh unusual arrangement, but it's important to the district. Lake Villa um does not have the resources currently to be able to provide those services. Um so this just spells out how those resources will be shared. You know, unfortunately being a grade school, there's not a whole lot of, you know, criminal investigations that originate out of those schools, but on the rare occasion that they do or may, we want to have very clear guidelines on who is responsible for conducting that investigation and ensuring that there's a spirit of cooperation, not only between us and Lake Villa, but within the school districts. This just spells out who's got what responsibilities and what roles within, within the community.
So do we have the resources to provide school, school resource officers down to Oakland and and Eddy and all the other, so trade schools within the village itself?
If you, if you were asking me if we could place a, a individual S R O in all of those schools, answer would be absolutely not. We don't have those resources. The S R O agreement with District Thirty-four um is a shared model that will, so one S R O will be allocated to the district on a full-time basis. Um as highlighted during previous presentations, the uh S R O will primarily be based out of the upper grade, but they do have and see a need within some of the other elementary districts. Um they felt since they do, uh their, their, their district does include Oakland, they did not want to isolate Oakland from being able to have access to some of those services, and you know, there's certainly the relationship building component that an S R O um serves, serves to fulfill. So you know, I don't see it putting a big drain on the S R O and their time and having it put a lot of focus down there, but certainly if, if that school has a need for S R O services, or they want the S R O to come in and teach a class or just work on building some relationships, you know, they do things like Hi-Fi Fridays, that sort of thing. They certainly would want to be able to provide those services within our district.
Our fees enough to cover the wear and tear in our ops?
So they are paying seventy-five percent of the annual salary of the officer. Arguably, we're, we're coming out just fine on that. Um you know, the time, the officer's time being spent in the school districts, about sixty-seven percent. So they're reimbursing us for seventy-five percent of those costs, um not inclusive of overtime or special details, those will be invoiced at a, a separate rate.
And I'm just, just questioning whether I need to start.
Being very concerned about our fees between us and District Thirty-four and our agreements, must have received.
Any other questions on this item? For, I want to sidebar.
Sidebar nights.
You can get no money.
Alright, um I have a request to go into executive session regarding collective bargaining and potential, uh I'm sorry, pending litigation with no further business to take place after executive session. We have a motion, we have a motion of the second. Motion, trustee Mason, second trustee Berman, um roll call.
Berman?
Yes.
McNeil?
Yes.
Pierce?
Hi.
Mason?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Alright, we're going into executive session at eight oh nine, uh with no further business to take place after executive session. Uh meeting is adjourned.